Good evening, uh, I'll wait till everybody gets in the door here.
Such a good point.
My name is Bruce Elliott, I'm the chairman of the commission. Uh, and I'm responsible for keeping order in our meeting. And I appreciate you all coming out tonight, if you haven't been here before. Yeah, I'll try to keep it moving, so. We're gonna start with the first agenda item tonight, which has to do with attendance. Everyone's here, so we don't need to appoint alternates. And from there, we go into approval of the minutes of our meeting, two immediately prior meeting. Starting with September fifteenth. Um, I know I've had an opportunity to read them, I don't have any comments on the September fifteenth. Does anybody else have suggestions, corrections, or additions they wanna point out? This is for September fifteenth. Okay. Hearing on how about a motion to accept the minutes as they were submitted?
Moved.
Second please. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Thank you, the motion carries unanimously. Uh, next item is our minutes from October sixth. And uh, what somebody else starts the ball rolling, any comments, corrections?
I have one minor correction, line thirty-three, my last name is spelled incorrectly.
It's correct elsewhere.
Oh, there's a T in there. I gotta tell you, I guess he did those minutes. Mister Vice Chairman, I apologize.
No problem.
I like the new line here.
Yes, yes.
I kinda like the T in there too, actually.
Any other comments? Could I have a motion to accept as they were submitted with one correction of uh, the spelling of Tony's name?
Moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second, um, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay.
I'm gonna abstain Bruce.
Okay, we have one extension. All the votes cast were. Yeah, all the votes cast were fine. Uh, oh, we didn't cast votes yet, that's why I'm confused. All in favor, say aye.
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 And there's one, there's one uh, abstention. The motion not carried, so the minutes are adopted for the meeting of October sixth. The first item tonight of commission business is we're gonna deal with an issue. It's both a public hearing and it's, it's, actually none of it is uh, it's action for a text amendment. And because it's a text amendment, it's also gonna be a public hearing. So this is an opportunity for members of the public who are interested in this topic. Or want to raise issues or query the commission on points made. Public participation needs to be limited to this issue though. The application, uh, the zoning commission of twenty-five dash seventeen, town of Simsbury. Owner represented is Brittany McGilpin. Applicant for a text amendment to create a new zoning regulation related to dark sky lighting for the Simsbury zoning regulations, Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code and the Simsbury Center Code. Um, with that said, that's the maybe one who won, Brittany. Oh, Brittany, excuse me.
Okay, thank you Chair, just changing all the names today, it's fine. Uh, this is our third meeting regarding this dark sky lighting regulation. Uh, for those not aware, uh, dark sky lighting aims to reduce light pollution um, and its impact to the dark skies in town. This is lighting, outdoor lighting, um, as it relates to new developments, sporting, field, residential developments. Um, of the, in the twenty twenty-four P O C D, this item was discussed extensively in the section on what we wanna protect. So it was an action item um, to incorporate dark sky lighting into our zoning regulations. We, the commit- uh, planning staff partnered with the conservation commission um, to develop this regulation to address this, this action item. One of the aims of dark skies, um, again, reducing lighting pollution, um, utilizing key principles, which include shielded fixtures, uh, so, so making sure you utilize fixtures that do not have uplighting, um, that would, that would shine into the sky. Also, uh, utilizing appropriate brightness, um, so the amount of light intensity, um, allowed on properties and property lines. Uh, photometric plans and, and measuring through foot candles. Also utilizing uh, color temperature, an appropriate color temperature, um, by the light source. Uh, dark sky encourages those warmer uh, light colors. Also utilizing timing controls to make sure that motion sensors uh, limit the use of lighting uh, during late hours when it's not needed. The, the new regulation will pertain to new proposed development in town uh, for public and private properties uh, that submit a site plan application that includes the installation of new exterior lighting on the property. Uh, also in, it also applies to site plan amendments where there is a proposed change to lighting on a property in terms of changing of light fixtures, pole heights, uh, light, or heights, pole heights and location of lighting. Um, research, uh, to create the regulation utilized with, with our chair's help, Marjorie Winters, um, the model ordinance that was developed by Lights Out Connecticut. I also reviewed other lighting regulations in town, um, that had a dark sky component to them. So the new lighting regulation, um, would take, so, so our, we have, we have three zoning uh, documents. Each mention dark sky lighting in them. This would kind of um, center them into the zoning regulation. So there would be a new section in our townwide zoning regulation called outdoor lighting, section eight point eight. Uh, we would also add definitions to the definition section seventeen point four. In the Simsbury Center Code, we would provide wording changes, um, that would help, that would tell them to reference section eight point eight in the zoning regulation. And the same would be done for the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code. Uh, once the ordinance was, uh, the regulation was developed, uh, we provided various parties with a chance to review and comment on the regulation, includes the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, other parties. Uh, the town staff department such as building, engineering, public works also reviewed. We also had Leo Smith, who is the Northeast Regional Director, uh, for the Connecticut chapter of Dark Sky. He reviewed and he provided comments as well, those were included in the final text that was provided previously. We also, as part of the public hearing process, referred this item to the planning commission, uh, who provided a positive referral on nine, nine twenty-five, saying that it aligns with the uh, P O C D. So I just wanted to bring your attention, I have a hard copy uh, at your uh, dais. There was one change that I wanted to put in, um, it was to, um, the, on the second page, I had a crossed out version, so the, the non-essential light section, um, number three was redundant and kind of counter to what the first two was, so that is going to be taken out. Uh, so it's four B, three is crossed out, just for your, just for your knowledge. And uh, with that, uh, we also have Marjorie Winters here, the chair of the conservation commission, if you wanted to say a few words.
Thank you, and I thank Brittany for all her hard work looking on this. Um, it's, it's lovely when you have an environmental problem that can be solved with turning off a switch. And we do have the technology now and um, hopefully now the regulation to ensure that our skies remain dark and hopefully we will see many more s- um, stars in the sky. But also it's really beneficial to not only our human health, but also the health of the wildlife that, that we share the town with. So thank you for taking this up and, and we're happy to have been able to help out some way with this.
Thank you for your work on it, your effort. I like the definitions.
Yes.
I think that's really helpful.
Marjorie did a lot on that, that, they're very complete and thorough. It's not the most well-known topic, you know, when you get into the nitty-gritty of it, so it's, it's really helpful to have those terms outlined.
Yeah.
Brittany, did you have anything more you wanted to say?
Oh, no, no, sorry, sorry.
Cause okay, I'll move along to uh, some comment. So how about that, are there commissioners who have questions or comments?
Um, I just, I would additionally like to thank Marjorie and Brittany for all of your work on this. Um, you know, I've been very excited about this. Um, I'm thrilled to see it come to fruition, so thank you very much for all of your work.
I'm just gonna echo everything that Chair just said. Me too.
Yes, we all appreciate what you've done.
And also, as a chairman, let me offer the same sort of thankful uh, appreciation for your effort. It's come a long way in this topic and it's a great thing to, to finally get just about over. So thank you. Now, uh, in terms of the public, if there are members of the public who would like to uh, uh, make, ask questions or comments on this topic, um, now's the time, sure. We need you to give your name and your address.
Mister Chairman, it would be helpful if, if you got them to come up to the dais.
How about if you come up to the dais?
It's just easier.
Uh, my name is John Pico, I live at Six Teachers Turn in Simsbury. Uh, and I first wanna thank the commission for giving the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed dark sky lighting zoning regulation. Um, Simsbury is often considered to be the first western frontier over the mountain from the Connecticut River Valley. Early settlers came from Windsor, seeking land and employment in the pitch and tar manufactory, supported by the abundant pine forests which covered the area. One of the first things they noticed was something the Masako tribe had known for centuries. The sky in this area was exceptionally dark. Some of Simsbury's earliest inhabitants, from the Masako tribe to town historian Lucius Barber, regularly commented on the darkness of Simsbury's night sky. When the Pequot War reached the town in sixteen thirty-seven, most engagements, according to Barber, were strategically conducted under the quote, "impossible darkness of Simsbury's night." In the nineteenth century, downtown Simsbury was home to fifteen taverns. Today, only two remain, Hot Meadow Street, Phelps Tavern and Pettibone Tavern, uh, now Abigail's. According to town historian Lucius Barber, who wrote a history of Simsbury, published posthumously in nineteen thirty-three, these taverns were built as close to patrons' homes as possible, so people would not have to walk far in the dark. Too many patrons, he explained, became lost on their way home, with some even dying on the railroad tracks or drowning in the Farmington River. Simsbury's dark night sky, for better and worse, has been a constant in this area for hundreds of years. Today, you can still see what the Masako, early settlers, and tavern goers experienced just by looking up. These photos were taken by my son over the last three years from our backyard looking south in the skies above the meadow that's next to Hop Hollow. It's the same meadow, incidentally, where a new high-density development project has been proposed. So these views may be fleeting, but that's a discussion for another day. For now though, these photos are only possible because of the low light pollution of Simsbury and the Farmington Valley. Talcot Ridge shields us from the light of Hartford, so residents of Simsbury are able to enjoy dark, starry skies. Development projects pursued without regard to light pollution pose a threat to this natural beauty. I believe it is in the interest of this commission and all Simsbury residents that you vote in favor of this new zoning regulation, thereby helping to safeguard one of our town's oldest qualities. A quality that has uniquely defined the Farmington Valley's natural and built landscape for centuries. We all deserve to maintain this element of our town's heritage for us and future generations. Thank you.
Can we have a copy of what you wrote?
Oh, uh, can I submit it electronically?
Yes.
Yes. I'll send it to Brittany.
And the historic society would be interested.
Okay.
I'm on the board.
Thank you.
That was well-written, thank you.
Brittany, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Will this apply to our town buildings and facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, for new, new, yep, when new lighting is proposed, that was my question.
So when we're ready to do new lighting, that's when they'll all switch?
Correct.
Good.
Well, wait a minute, it's not all, it's the ones that are affected by the change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no reach back to other buildings, okay.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
Good. Any other questions or comments from the public? And the commissioners? Any further discussion on the, on the matter here?
Well, I think Marge has told us before, besides the being able to enjoy the skies, it's got a lot to do with nocturnal animals also, and their need for night.
Did you wanna expand on that point?
What, the nocturnal animals? Yes. Well, yeah, it's, um, uh, I think was seventy percent of our mammals are nocturnal. Uh, sixty percent of our pollinating insects are nocturnal. So there's, uh, the light pollution really does affect them tremendously. So this is a, something that's certainly an environmental thing, but also the American Medical Association finds that uh, light at night, um, affects our own health. So there are many reasons for going, um, this route to, to lessen it and, um, keep the dark sky, which was, you know, so stark. I mean, we, we've evolved with dark skies for millennium. We've only evolved with, um, electric lighting for a hundred and, or so years, a hundred and fifty years, so. Um, we're reverting back to what we're used to.
Thank you. Anything else? Could I have a motion to approve the?
I would, uh, do a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm gonna move that we, uh,
Excuse me, thank you.
I'm gonna move that we close the public hearing on application Z C twenty-five dash seventeen.
One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay.
I mean, you do have draft motions in front of you tonight.
I was just gonna mention it, but the, the public hearing portion is closed. And now we'll call attention to the draft motion that we have.
I will make that motion.
Go right ahead then.
Okay. Um, it's moved that the zoning commission approves application Z C twenty-five dash seventeen, a text amendment regarding an outdoor lighting regulation dated October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, based on a finding that the amendment is consistent with the policies and action steps in the plan of conservation and development. The text amendment is effective October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, pending the statutory appeal period.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? For both that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried unanimously and uh, thank you once again, Brittany, for your work on this. Be much better off for your efforts.
Thank you.
Alright. So our next uh, item of business tonight is uh, to consider uh, a site plan uh, application for, well, it's number twenty-five, twenty-four, Talcat Mountain Storage LLC. David Ziyaks, agent for a site plan amendment to construct two additional ninety-nine hundred self, square foot self-storage units. At seventy Hot Meadow Street. Yep, E eighteen, lot one seventeen, lot double oh one, two A. It's zoned industrial iPad. So, Mister Ziyaks.
Mister Chairman, I've just got a couple slides before Mister Ziyaks and his team jumps up. Um, just to, just, it helps friendly issues, so, yeah, Talcat, Talcat Mountain self, self-storage. You've seen them a couple times, one, the original site plan. And then you did a revision where they added, uh, I think just last year, maybe a year and a half ago now, uh, the out, outdoor storage that you can see on uh, this aerial. And so today they're back in, uh, to try to, and to replace the outdoor storage with two additional nine thousand square foot units. And they can talk about, um, the reason for that and, and the demand. So it does, it replaces the, 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 the design is, is identical, uh, to, to the existing storage design out there. So they did not go to the DRB using the exact same materials that have been used out there. So we thought that was unnecessary. Uh, that, that's kinda what it looks like. And just, just to, to be clear where we are, so it would add these two buildings exactly where the outdoor storage was. Uh, you know, this, this property is zoned, uh, this, this property is zoned I one as the underlying zone and it's part of that, 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 that planned area development that includes Aspen Green and Curaleaf and the new mess school down, uh, in that southern part of Hot Meadow Street. Uh, and I'll, I'll leave it to Mister Ziyaks and Mister Burr and his team to.
Could you start with your name and address again too, please?
Sure. My name is Dave Ziyaks, I'm a professional engineer and principal with F A Hescott Associates. And uh, with me tonight is uh, Dave Burr and Patrick McNeil. Um, McNeil rather, uh, from the development and ownership team, in case you have any questions for them. As usual, George has done a good job outlining the, the bases for you and also in his staff report, that you, uh, have a copy of. Uh, I'll just point out a couple of uh, highlights. Again, this is over on seventy, the address is seventy Hot Meadow Street. It is the lot, the back lot, lot two A. The front portion of this lot that affronts along, um, Hot Meadow Street is yet to be developed. There's about seven acres of land there. You can see it's outlined by that uh, landscaping and it's sort of just an open field right now. Um, so this pad site is five point seven five acres, does have the underlying zone of I one underneath and the outdoor storage is allowed in that zone. Uh, back in twenty twenty-one, we did come in for an original site plan, which just had the first fifty-five thousand square feet, so it just had the, the buildings, the six buildings, the four long buildings and then the two, uh, what they call climate control. Um, the fo, the front four buildings are the traditional, with the multitudes of doors where you just rent a small space. Uh, the back two buildings are climate controlled, so you can put in, uh, your, your storage, uh, stuff that's more sensitive to, you know, heat and, uh, and you want some air conditioning and heat uh, to store those more sensitive items. Then we came back in twenty twenty-two, as George pointed out, and we added about thirty-five thousand square feet of that outdoor storage area, which has, you know, your, your typical RVs, boats, and other recreational vehicles. You can go, you can rent a parking space and park your vehicle there. Um, this new application would convert that thirty-five thousand square foot area to those two buildings, both nine, nine thousand nine hundred ninety square feet. And that would bring the total indoor storage on the site to seventy-four thousand eight hundred square feet. And there would be no longer any outdoor storage available for rental on the site. And really, the change for this is just changing market conditions. The, the climate-controlled buildings are getting more and more popular with folks and uh, that spaces, uh, you know, at a premium throughout Hartford County right now, so. Uh, the owners see a, a need, building for additional buildings and, um, and that's what this proposal is for. There's no changes to the overall drainage plan, the out, the perimeter of this entire site is already fenced in. There's the large landscaping berm along, uh, what would be the west side, the top side of the drawing. And that's not going to change at all. And the, uh, the drainage and utilities was originally sized up to allow for potential, uh, expansions such as this. So we don't have to really make any changes to the drainage plan or to the utility plan. As, uh, George's report points out, the, uh, site complies with the, uh, the overall zoning regulation and is generally consistent with the existing pad approval for that entire parcel that, as he pointed out, starts at, uh, the Tower Business Park driveway, the Chub, Old Chub Business driveway and it goes all the way down to the town line in, in Avon. Uh, the report does point out that, um, basically, in order to develop that front seven acres and the remainder of parcel two, uh, the owners are gonna have to come back in for a, a, an amendment to the pad and obviously a new site plan. Um, I have spoken to Mister Greenberg, who owns that land, and his representative, Rich Korea, and everyone understands that that's the case. So, uh, this is the last sort of site plan only approval, a request for this land. They're gonna have to come back in with the detailed amendment to the P A D and, and work that out with the commission. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I've been there, it's, it's a nice storage facility and the fact that you're doing two additional buildings that match the existing buildings.
Oh.
It's good.
Yeah, I have no objection, I go down that way all the time, cause I bring my dog down. I was just there tonight. Um, I do have just one question, sort of related, but since you're here. Um, with the berm that separates, you know, from, from Hot Meadow Street, when this came to us, you know, a number of years ago, the berm was supposed to have like nice tall evergreens and it's a little scrappy look. Like, I just looked today, I'm like, it filled in, but I don't know, are you, do, is there any intention to kind of update that landscaping? Cause a lot of those trees died and it's not quite as, as, hmm.
As we envisioned?
As pleasing as the vision that was presented to us when you guys came to us that time. So I'm just curious.
Any comments there, Mister Burr?
I think we lost, I think it's three of the evergreens, I could be off by one, not sure. Um, but I have no problem with replacing those.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, it, it's certainly not a make or break for this, but since you're here, I just wanted to bring it up. Cause every time I go by, I'm like, I just remember there being.
Yeah, everything that went in was per the plan, which was approved, all the sizing and all.
Sure. Sure, sure, sure.
But, yeah, you're right, I think we've lost three or maybe four, so if we can replace those. Yep.
No problem. Yeah, otherwise, I, I think it's, you know, nice to meet, so we have no objections.
Um, could you just clarify for me, the, those two buildings are, each one is gonna be one large room? Space, there's no partitioning, there's no se- separation, it's just climate control.
Oh, no, it's all separated, it's just, it's just internals, it's just storage that's internal to the building. So you can't, you know, you, uh, you have to go inside and if you go in there, you'll be renting smaller units that are all locked in, you know, so you have a private unit.
Okay.
You go inside the building. It's just that it's temperature controlled, that's the only difference.
I saw some partitioning relative to the drawings of the other structures.
Yeah.
And none really in those two.
Oh, okay, it's the same thing, yeah.
The world is changing. So, um, just in, in terms of compliance with the P V D, that you're, I think I just understood that the limit on this property right now is seventy thousand square feet. And is where, approval of these two buildings will put you at seventy-four thousand eight hundred square feet, am I correct?
Yes.
And the limit is seventy thousand square feet. And I think what, what George has suggested in his note to us is that we have the authority to view that as a minor issue and to go ahead with approval if we so choose, even though it doesn't comply with the regulations. But in the future, I'm, I'm not sure what happens when you wanna make it a little bigger, right?
Well, I, I can tell you.
It comes with something that doesn't conform.
This self-stored, the, the, this parcel is, this is maxed out now. What we're looking at is what happens to the, the front piece and then potentially going back and revisiting the Curaleaf piece again, because, uh, they have a, a, an expansion that was approved a number of years ago by this commission that they've never moved forward with. They're still in the same facility. So the question is, what are they going to do? So this whole area is gonna have to be revisited with the commission when, when the next step comes forward.
Where was the approval for expansion to?
They had an expansion on the north side of the original building.
Oh, it was an addition on the building that was a built, it was approved.
Yeah, yeah.
Were they just south of this?
Just south.
Yep.
Yeah, actually, where that, when I saw that cluster of trees, that's where the addition would have gone, right there.
You can see it, it's.
Yeah. And they may still do it, but it, as of right now, it's, it's quiet. And, um, so, you know, there's gonna, again, a, a, a new master plan or a modified master plan is gonna have to come forward with the commission, you'll have to revisit all these issues again, decide what you want to.
It's all under one ownership.
Yes. Who owns both parcels?
No, the, the ownership for the self-storage is different than the ownership of the front parcel.
Oh.
Mister Greenberg. Mr. Greenberg still owns that front parcel and the and the Curaleaf side here.
Okay. And the Cure.
Yeah.
And the division is like kind of along that berm is where the two parcels are, oh, in there, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's inside.
Yeah. It's right there.
So the so the site limitation is only on the back parcel, not on the whole parcel?
Yeah, the back. No, no, the back parcel is, we're maxed out.
Or it's two parcels, is what I'm saying, so it's.
We're maxed out now, it's.
Yeah, let 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 me, let's be be clear, um, so a a couple things, so so it is a pad and so pa- um. Minor amendments to a pad can take place at the time of site plan. So you can make an adjustment at 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 the time of site plan, which is essentially what 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 they're doing here. So staff's thinking was this, is that that thirty thousand square feet of kind of outdoor recreation was approved and is approved, so it exists as as it is. And, you know, replacing that area with two additional buildings that have square footage to it. Um, it's still, in our opinion, was minor in nature, because it's.
Yeah.
It stormwater's been covered, it's it's simply, it's a it's a reflection of the marketplace.
Same here.
But the 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 significant point we're trying to make is that any building that comes in on, so if somebody comes in tomorrow. Mr. Korea and and or his partners or anyone uh come in with whatever, a ten thousand square foot retail building. We would say, no, you must proceed to the zoning commission to amend all the ma- because.
Okay, so this, these buildings are part of that whole piece and it's.
They are, that square footage is included.
They're backloading it and then the front is open.
Interesting, though, this, the original pad showed should, you know, mixed use development all over this. But when, when when this was approved in twenty nineteen. The applicant and the commission essentially applied just the I one standards and says you can build a storage facility as part of the I one here, so. Which you certainly can do and was legal at the time, but the overall pad includes the square footage.
Yep.
And the land base, that's that's the key, um.
And the Curaleaf.
And yes, but there's three different land bases that have different square footages and different mixes and and different kinds of things. And frankly, for any any pad, you're you're always gonna be revisiting. The square footages and building locations and those kinds of things as as just part of the market changing.
Right.
Right, but I think that, I'm not sure if everybody realizes, now that Mr. Greenberg acquired this property, he acquired a hundred, I think it was a hundred and sixty acres. He he acquired everything from. The roadway that's to the north of what we're looking at right now, all the way to the Avon Town Line, Mr. Greenberg owned all that.
And then he develops the residential.
There's big apartments and schools and all sorts of things have gone in there, right?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Right.
But he still holds ownership of some of it, but anyway.
But tonight, we're just talking about self storage.
Yeah, all all we're trying to say is that I I I think you can, I think you can make the change, because it's it's only four thousand square feet.
Right.
Yeah, you're right. Yes, it does.
And then anything later comes in, I it it you'll, your job would be to do a master plan amendment and work with the applicant to determine the right uses and the right open space and you'll do all that again.
Yeah.
No, I think that makes sense, I just wanna make sure I understand, so we're not limited to never having anything on that other spot, but it allows us to be. Filling in this with the self storage seems like it allows us to then be even more discretionary as to what is gonna be. And how we think about that remaining piece in the future, so I think that's actually like a positive, in my opinion.
In the future. So the access, is it from the top, the north?
Yeah, you come in, you come in the Tower Business Park driveway.
Or should. The little curb town.
Business drive is right here, yeah.
Okay, all right, and then you enter.
There's a light right there.
Yeah.
And then it there's driving around the whole thing.
Yes, yeah, once you get past the gate, you can go anywhere you want inside.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
I think it's a good plan.
So what this is size that most people are interested in.
Sure. Did you have?
Yeah, I have, yes, sir, I have it right here. Um, I'll move that the zoning commission approves application number twenty five dash twenty four of Talkabout Mountain Storage LLC, David Zayaks. Agent for a site plan amendment to the con- uh to construct two additional nine thousand nine hundred self storage units at seventy Hot Meadow Street, subject to the following conditions. One, project shall be developed in substantial performance with the site plan set dated April six to twenty twenty one. Revised September twelve twenty twenty five, zoning table site plan sheet ten dash seven dash twenty five by FA Hesketh and Associates Incorporated. The applicant shall submit two sets of milars and one paper set of approved documents for signature and uh recordation prior to the issuance of the building permit. Three, the conditions approved in ZC twenty one dash oh six and ZC twenty two dash two three, as applicable, remain in full force and effect. Four, an as-built shall be submitted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Second.
So we have a motion and second to approve the application. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If my consideration was a hundred fifty.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks for coming.
Night.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the next site plan application is uh ZC twenty five dash twenty five. Uh, it is a site plan amendment for Farley's Pub at sixteen sixteen. Sixteen. Hot Meadow Street, um, so this is kind of a a a a multi-fold. Application that includes a roof mounted sign, a free standing sign, uh, an addition as well as a uh as well as a deck. And it is really an expansion of Farley's Pub really to the, I guess that's to the east now that I. I look at that, so um.
So where is Hot Meadow?
Yeah, here you go, I I I I did it, so Hot Meadow Street.
There, okay.
Existing sign that's out front, that I I do have a picture of, you'll see in a second, so existing Farley's Pub here. So the addition that will be to to the to to the rear of the pro- uh rear of the of the car building. And then the deck further uh further east of the of the addition. I think I, so I show you the square footage, right? So thirteen hundred square foot addition, five hundred and seventy six square foot deck, uh, so you have you have a a free standing sign. Building sign, really the free standing sign and the building sign are really replacements of, you know, panel replacements of the of 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 what's been there, just with really with the name change. And then you have the east elevation where you can see the addition here and then uh and then the deck. And then if you're looking, I guess that's the north elevation, looking south down down Hot Meadow, existing building, addition. And and decking, the uh the application went to our friends at the Design Review and had a recommendation of approval. Last month with uh Mr. Hollis taking that through, I think there were two additional conditions related to um to materials, which I don't think the applicant had any particular issues with. Uh, the applicant is here, if he wanted to add anything, um. He also had, he also showed up kind of the interior again, existing addition outside deck, so we kind of have a good sense of what that looks like.
The front patio stays?
No.
I was wondering, okay, because I didn't see it on here. Everything's going to the.
Bye bye.
Okay, thanks.
So that will be parking?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the front patio, you mean the outdoor seating that's currently there, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's in the, it's in the parking lot.
Totally, that's the front patio.
Yeah, I tried to make sure that there was one patio here, miss.
So it's, does it require more parking for all this extra square footage?
There's parking, I believe, the whole parking lot, plenty of parking on the side.
There's plenty, there's adequate parking.
Kids' notes to begin with.
Yeah, it's adequate parking, absolutely.
Do you want, just tell me.
Parking.
Oh, just. She was back.
Tell me, you are.
That's one of the nuns and priests, hello. Name's Kevin Farley.
Name and address.
Uh, name's Kevin Farley, I'm the owner of Farley's Pub at sixteen sixteen Hot Meadow Street. Uh, I'm from Windsor, Connecticut, uh, had business there for the past uh six years, was Farley Max, now is Farley's Pub. Um, so over the beautiful COVID come out of it, now we're adding on, um. The landlord sees a lot of potential in me as a business and we're growing. I'm losing business without even people walking in because small bars, small place and we're not just adding on just to go, I want that on, so. Um, I think it'd be just to be a nice addition to the building and area to, you know, get more business and stuff, plus. North Sinver, or call it no hope for Hot Meadow, because building up now with all the uh. Well, yeah, we thought it'd be no hope, um, but uh, because of all the building, chill uh, Hockey Rank, um, Holiday Inn Express Building, this and that. Let's start covering a little more, so it can be a good addition.
Can you kind of talk us through the layout of it, because it's kind of hard to tell, like, i- is that just a long bar along that?
Have you been to my restaurant at all?
Yes.
All right, if you go right, if you if you're sitting at my bar.
Yes.
The bar's gone.
Okay.
What we're gonna do is that we're gonna break through, so when you walk straight down, there'll be a sixteen seat bar.
Hmm.
Then on the left inside, kind of a banquet with booze, which goes out to the deck.
Okay.
And then on the other side of the bar, it'll be like a, where my emergency door is, will be a hallway that goes down to the basement. An office, an additional bathroom, handicap, and after the deck and around the bar. So I'm only adding, I think thirty five seats I'm adding to the inside.
Oh, fantastic.
So I'm just taking the outside patio, putting inside and then deck and then doing that.
What's there right now, just like parking lot?
Behind me?
Yeah.
Field.
There's dirt, there's just nothing, nothing.
Nothing, sweet. Sure, awesome.
Is there actually a building behind you?
Nope, there's eminence to the right and then they uh, other than to the left, so I got I got I got a football site field.
No, it's just big.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, there's nothing.
So what's your proposed construction schedule?
Uh, last March, this, um, probably uh. But we're, um, the contractor, who is my landlord's brother, is gonna come back in April to start digging, so.
Gonna continue operating, if you're concerned, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And just in terms of the parking, the uh the parking was with the existing structure was already, was in excess of of the requirement, so the addition doesn't uh doesn't create the need for additional.
Yeah. Great.
So the the two DRB changes were the the trim board between, where the siding changes from I to N. And also the use of the color green, is that the other?
Yes, it looks like.
Yeah, they wanted to to, yes, they wanted the similar color green that that was there already.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, does anybody have other questions, comments?
Little town line pizza.
Now's the time.
Back in the storm system, my sister.
Chan, did you say you had something on your mind?
No, I was just reminiscing.
So do you have a lot of Irish food?
Yeah, things of mash, fish and chips, like sort of pie, you know, heavy food.
Let's keep it kind of relevant, so we can keep moving, Debbie.
Yes.
All right, I'll order samples of food if I knew you all around, so.
I'll make this, um.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve.
Sure. I'm, oops, were you making it, Tony, or do you want me to?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move that the zoning commission.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, one sec, am I on the right, yeah, I am. Uh, I move that the zoning commission approves ZC number twenty five dash twenty five of Grillo Enterprises owner Frank Grillo, applicant for the site plan amendment to construct a. Plus or minus uh one, three, four, eight, square foot addition and a plus or minus five hundred and seventy six square foot deck and updated signage for Farley's Pub at sixteen ten Hot Meadow Street, AKA sixteen sixteen Hot Meadow Street. Subject to the following conditions, one, the project shall be developed in accordance to the signed proposal and site plans, uh, stamp received September twenty six, twenty twenty five. Two, a trim board shall be added between the existing buildings and the proposed addition to break up the existing and proposed siding. Three, the vinyl siding on the proposed addition shall use the same green color found on the existing siding.
Well, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application as it was submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The motion passes, uh, also passes. Moving right along here. These are traditions, you're all saying. Are you Mr. Grillo?
I am.
Thanks for your continued investment, the town of Simms.
Yeah, it's gonna look nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, ZC twenty five, twenty six, fifteen oh three, Hot Meadow Street. Site plan for a new hotel, uh, I've just got one or two slides, the applicant has a full team and a full presentation, so I'm gonna carry out with it. But it is a site plan for a seventy two thousand square foot hotel, uh, it's a hundred and twenty room identified as a Holiday Inn Express. It is on a seven acre portion of an overall fifty four acre kind of master parcel uh on Hot Meadow Street. Obviously, this is, you know, essentially what we think of as as an anchor use that that is gonna continue to have a a close relationship with the skating facility. And really kind of the first piece of the puzzle in this development, and so a very important one. As a reminder, a hotel is a by right use in this B two zoning district. That means that it is permissible upon your site plan review and a a public hearing is not required as part of an application like this. But your design review board provided a positive recommendation, uh, and was fully supportive of the uh design elevations and the design materials that were submitted by the applicant. They also uh, they also secured an inland wetlands permit uh back in early October. And so I just just wanted to make sure, I know everybody knows where we are, but just as a reminder, you've got Dorset Crossing to the north, Hot Meadow Street here to the east. You have a skating facility, you've got the big Y, you have the fifty four or so acres here, kind of bifurcated by the Saxon, Saxon Brook, Saxon Brook, yeah. Uh, and so this is, the the site plan is shown in 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 that in that upper corner. Uh, the applicant has provided a uh, you know, a colorized site plan that I'll I'll let them walk through. As well as uh as as elevations, which um the design reboard thought were fabulous. So the uh, I'll just, I'll just hit a couple of the of 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 the staff issues. There were um in both, in both the planning department's referral and the town engineer's referral. There were a number of issues identified uh for planning related to, you know, uh, just making sure that we had, doing the the height calculations. The same way as the applicant was doing height, height uh, the height calculations. Uh, making sure we had a requirement for sidewalk, the applicant was willing to put a sidewalk portion in, loading spaces, landscape design. Um, all of the planning and zoning issues are resolved with the revisions that the applicant has made. The town engineer is kind of pressed on his dis- on his on his review, so there are what I would call some outstanding engineering comments at this time. Particularly related to the storm water design and whether it kind of meets the requirements of the state storm water requirements. Because we sit on top of an aquifer, and so there are some elements the town engineer would like that, would like the applicant to follow, would require the applicant to follow. Um, and the applicant hasn't 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 really had the opportunity to respond since we sent those comments out today. I do think, you know, if it is, uh, if the commission is inclined, I I I think we have developed conditions of approval, we've done this before. Where you have engineering comments that are outstanding, we just, you know, we we just continue to work before we we issue any building permit on the site. But um, that's not how you wanna go, we're willing to to work with the applicant, you know, to to resolve its issues. But uh, they are issues that can be resolved, they're really kind of technical engineering issues that we've got to get through, and that's that's the easiest way to say it.
Good question, George, this is coming to us because it's on wetlands, that's the, because it's a as of right use?
No, I mean, it requires a site plan approval in this part, yeah, yeah, I mean, the use is permitted by your site plan approval, yeah.
Just because it's just a site. Okay, just a site plan approval.
It's permitted, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, but but no, no public hearing, no special exception, I feel like that. Uh, I think with that, I would um, I would I would ask Mr. Doyle, I think who's gonna lead the team tonight, and I can pull up his. He has a full team over there, so.
Yeah, we got the full team. We could spend the next three or four hours. Oh, look at the left, look at the horror. Uh, I'm Phil Doyle.
Five minutes.
Um, the uh, we are, I am the agent for the uh for the applicant, you know, just Dave Zayaks, was a couple of minutes ago for the self storage.
Agree. Yeah.
Uh, we're, I'm LADA over on West Street. See, you can run it yourself with the right click. Let me just test this. Okay, good. The um, George has pretty much laid laid everything out. Adam Westhaver is the uh developer behind this this project and Adam is sitting, he's standing right there. And um, the 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 design team includes Brian Panico, who's right right next to Adam. And Scott Hesketh, our traffic engineer, in case there's any questions for for Scott. And Chris Hill, who's the uh project architect, who's uh sitting right next to Scott. It's a fifty four acre piece uh that is uh owned by um the, one of the subsidiaries of of Culbera. That uh Adam is buying, uh, from whom Adam is buying the land. And it's 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 a, it's a funny shaped piece, runs along Hot Meadow Street, comes in along the um boundary of the skating center. And then it runs back up into the area where the solar farms exist and then drops back down and and comes along Dorset Crossing. So there's two access roads, access driveways, one is Dorset, that's to the north. Dorset is a public road, when it was built in, uh, that whole front section was dedicated to the uh to the town. The access road for into the skating center, that's a private driveway, the town owns owns the land. And uh, Adam and Kelly, who's sitting in the front row row. The town owns owns the land and uh, Adam and Kelly, who's sitting in the front row right there. Are uh, own and and manage the um, skating center. And and we might have mentioned this to you as we presented in January when we looked for the zone change. You you granted us a a zone change for the fifty four acre piece for a portion of it. It's about fifteen acre portion right in here. Uh, the development zone that George was talking about is about seven acres right in 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 that area. The the zone line runs down through the brook, right through Saxton Brook. And there's no, there's no subdivision of this property, it's all one big property. The B two zone, the commercial zone where the hotel and other commercial uses like restaurants or or uh, uh, commercial offices, that type of thing. Is is, the B two zone is is this northern piece. And the I one zone is all of this piece. The skating center is zoned I I one. And we have left it that way because I one allows as of right recreation uses. And we see this whole area evolving centered around the activities that have been generated and continue to be expanded. You've recently seen the information on T V about the um, uh, Saint Jose- Saint Joseph's.
Yes.
Uh, wanting to start both the uh, men's and women's N C A A hockey teams. It's a lot of interest here. That that I one zone is going to most likely grow with recreational type uses like that. And ancillary uses around around them. But what Adam has discovered is that when with the business, with the hockey uh, associated with the with the center. We have a lot of traveling teams coming in, uh, and people are using a lot of hotel rooms, but the hotel rooms are not being used here in in Simsbury. They're they're mostly in Windsor. People are traveling in from the from the highway. And the the hotels we have in in town are wonderful, but they're geared for a different clientele. They're they're not geared for hockey teams, uh, probably for a lot of reasons. But the the Holiday Inn Express, Adam would be building that and owning it, and that would be the key. It's sort of like in a shopping center, you have an anchor, we have a hotel on one side and a and a um, and the and the major um, driver will be the the skating center on the other. Those two uh, are going to eventually link one another somewhere or in a couple of locations through the middle of the site. And I think I'll go to the next next slide. This is a reorientation, I twisted the the plan so it would fit on a twenty four by thirty six inch sheet. In in this plan, Dorset is right here. Hot Meadow Street is at the bottom of the site. Uh, Saxton comes through the middle, and we've got the uh, skating center with the addition that that they're just finishing building uh, now. When uh, we looked at this, what we're conceiving is some type of commercial development, sort of a commercial master plan in in this area. And all too many times we've seen, we've done it ourselves, when we have started to develop a master plan, sometimes it turns out perfectly, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes you you think you may have a building located in a in a in a specific spot and it doesn't turn out, and then we've got to come back and we've got to say, gee, we're sorry, we didn't, it didn't turn out that way. We've decided to uh, not go that route at this point, developing a full master plan. Behind the scenes, we're looking at all different building types and locations, both uh, and again, this is to the east to the bottom of the sheet, and it's to the west to the top of the sheet. So this is our free phase one, that that's sort of to the west of the midpoint of the B two zone. We're looking also at what happens on the east, but we don't have any firm plans yet. We know that at some point, we're gonna be taking a road or driveway through the middle of the site, but we don't know, given what was just announced uh, this this past week. Whether that driveway is gonna go up, or whether the driveway is gonna come across and go down, or whether we're going to have another driveway through here. There are just too many options to know at this point. We do know we want the hotel here so that we can start to develop the commercial around it. And we know that at some point, we are gonna be taking a driveway through or perhaps two, to get over to the to the skating center. So this application relates to the placement of the of the hotel. The uh, we're putting in a loop drive around the hotel for fire protection purposes. And to set us up in case the master plan does work out the way we're we're starting to theorize. And let me go to the next.
Before you move on, could I interrupt just for a moment?
Sure.
That that slide that you just hit up there, could you point out where the approved but not yet built uh, apartments are?
Well, can I use this one, Bruce?
Tony Giorgio's apartments. George, do you know where those apartments are that are not built yet?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, we could just.
The next one, Chris.
Way behind Dorset.
So here, let me just see, Tom, I mean.
Behind the other.
Yeah, so they are gonna be, so here is the 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 one structure that's up to fifteen thousand square feet, so this is the land bay in here is where the apartments are gonna be.
That's the two buildings.
Uh, it's multiple buildings, two or three, uh, seventy two units, right about there.
In total.
Seventy two.
So you do total over there.
Seventy two in this location, correct.
Yeah.
And uh, George, could you point out where the current apartments are?
They're, oh, they're in the back.
Right here. Further up, further up.
Yeah.
Right here, where the, exactly where the the dot is.
Alright, okay, so this will be closer to that.
Thank you.
A little deeper in.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So you use the existing road for the main access? The Dorset Crossing.
Yep, we're using, but our driveway uh, will come off the the, let me go back.
The Dorset.
Gonna go back again. Our driveway is going to use the the Dorset Crossing.
Yeah. The existing. Yep.
That's why I mentioned at the beginning, it's it's public road.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And we're, we, and and I think Dorset Crossing is also an example, is sort of a master plan that changes.
There's a stop on the two.
Yes.
Yeah. No.
And uh, it's a it's a issue that you always have in working with master plans.
Yep.
But what we're proposing, what what we have taken to design review, what we've taken to uh, inland wetlands conservation, is a placement of a three story hotel. Uh, the zoning regulations have a forty foot building height, this would be underneath the forty foot building height. Uh, and and it does not have a specific parking requirement for uh, hotels. And um, uh, uh, the town planner has looked at other communities. We've actually done the same thing and we've looked at, we've gone to Holiday Inn Express, they they recommend basically one for one. Um, and but you see, most other communities are slightly higher than one to one. So we're proposing a hundred and twenty rooms and we've got a hundred and forty four parking spaces uh, proposed. About eighty or so of those parking spaces are outside. And we've all gone to hotels like this, Best Westerns and the like, and uh, you you park, you go to the front door. Our handicap parking space is accessible, parking spaces would be in the front support crochet here. Uh, but at the ends of the buildings, um, there is a, there will be a driveway that goes down. And uh, we will have about fifty parking spaces below the surface. Uh, and it's a little bit more expensive to do the parking underneath the building. Um, you see it a lot at ski resorts, that type of thing. Um, and what it does is it cuts down on, for that slight addition in in cost, it cuts down on site coverage. And uh, because fifty parking spaces is equal to about a half acre of parking. And a a half half acre of parking and and all the storm drainage that goes with it is just, it's it's a waste if we can, if we can put the parking somewhere else. So we're putting parking underneath the building.
Accessible from the parking lot and not the other side.
It's it's, yeah, it's a two, it, you'll be able to go in and and out on either side of the building with the parking.
Right, on.
If that's your question.
Well, the way you got parking on the.
Yeah, it's dou-
North and west.
Double loaded parking on the north.
Yes, and then drive underneath the building from there?
And right there, you drive underneath.
Oh, I see, one entrance here and one there, I got it.
Exactly, yeah. So it's it's convenient, uh, the architect can can show you the plans, there's an elevator core right here.
Mm-hmm.
That takes people up in stairways up to the um, to the main lobby. And um.
So how many spaces fit under the building?
Fifteen, right.
Fifty, what?
Fifty six.
Fifty six, okay.
So the um, the proposal, the plan is to put the driveway around, uh, we've got, you've seen the plans in the in the in the set. Um, the um, we've just seen the passage of the lighting regulation. And as we went through the uh, discussions with conservation inland inland wetland, this this plan more than meets all of the specifications in the in the new lighting plan. Uh, in fact, the, I, when I say more, the light poles are sixteen feet, you're allowed up to twenty feet in in the regulation. This 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 really does uh, meet meet the regulations.
The dark sky.
And um, and we we talked to conservation inland wetlands about that. There is a planting plan, we're we're relatively close to the property line, the building is probably eighty or ninety feet from the property line with the with the uh, point from Dorset. They have a big slope in this area and then a s- a stormwater basin. Their closest building is about three hundred feet from us. And uh, we're we're going to be leaving about an ten foot berm, it's it's about six feet here, going up to about twelve feet uh, back in the site. And then we'll be planting, as as suggested by design review, an American holly hedge on top of that that berm, so the two will be separated. But at the same point, with knowing that this commercial development, or excuse me, residential development happening at at Dorset. The the, and there's a town sidewalk that exists on this side, on the north side of Dorset, Dorset. We're proposing that the town, uh, staff suggestion, we think it's a good idea, to build uh, another public sidewalk on the south side of Dorset. Because we would like everybody to be able to walk over, so if we have restaurants here, things like that, shops, we'd like people to be able to do that, not have to get in their in their car. So that's built in, we'll we'll put a crosswalk here, and we may end up with a crosswalk uh, at 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 that end as well. We're proposing our um, the E V parking spaces up in this area plus uh, location, because you have to do handicap spaces as well, you can't um, uh, be discriminatory in that in that regard. The, it's in this area here that we will be coming in, proposing additional buildings, restaurants and or other shops or offices in 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 this zone. And you can see along along the back of the building, the south side of the building, we've curved that. And the idea is for this portion of the building to have that mu- at the third level, will have wonderful views of Talke Mountain. And uh, Chris can explain, we're proposing a rooftop deck here. So that people, there can be gatherings, uh, and people can, teams can get together, they could, they can look out on the mountain, they can order a pizza. And 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 have a uh, a group gathering. Part part of the program also has a patio uh, on the ground floor, on the ground in the back. Uh, that faces south, so it'll have a lot of nice sunlight, light, and then there is a, an enclosed pool, an indoor pool, that will be on that south side of the building. But ultimately, we'd like to have this sidewalk here punched through and have all of this area integrated, if we can pull it off. With sidewalks and plazas and and sitting areas for for restaurants, that's 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 the goal. And to to to, because we didn't wanna come in, knowing we're, we don't have a full master plan, we did not wanna come in and 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 say, gee, we don't know, have an idea of where we wanna go. And because at that point, we could have said, well gee, let's just stick a stormwater control area here, and that would have been a terrible mistake. So what we've done is, and uh, Brian can explain it. We've we've basically assumed that this core area is virtually a hundred percent impervious surface. So we've had Brian calculate a worst case situation for stormwater. And we've got uh, infiltrators proposed that will basically follow that line and would be underneath areas where parking spaces would be. So we've tried to si- think through some of these utility issues, understand where where they will be. And 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 then set up spaces where we can build buildings and plazas in an unrestricted area. Where we don't have to say, oh my god, I I stuck a a water pipe here, that was a major mistake. So it's, we've we've been, we've been trying to tread very carefully between going too far in doing a master plan and not going far enough. So so that's that's sort of where where we are, we meet and believe all of the uh, the zoning codes. And uh, we have, let me go to the next slide. For example, on erosion control, we're gonna be moving about twenty thousand yards of dirt. And 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 we need it because the site is slightly sloped from the back down towards Hot Meadow Street. So we're gonna be cutting up in this area, basically where the basement is. And we're gonna be using that material in in this zone so that we can uh, continue to build the 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 village out. So so the grading plan starts to extend to the south of our driveway. And we've prepared an erosion control plan that um, uh, the town engineer has has reviewed. We have the perimeter erosion controls, we'll have two access points for construction that have tracking pads. Those green areas are areas where we will have uh, short slopes, but those those slopes will all be protected by erosion control fabric. And we'll do it in two phases, first phase, second phase, we'll have our temporary sediment traps. And at least on a temporary basis, we'll have a top uh, topsoil stockpile in, at the, excuse me, at the uh, this north eastern portion of the site.
Oh, what was that?
That's the utility plan. I was gonna say, my god, what the heck is that? Uh. Brian?
I have some question.
Yeah, I'll I'll just, I'll scoot on. Now, question about underground parking, that's the way the underground parking would layout?
Okay.
The um, let me go back.
Oh, alright, so drive through the middle and one way out the other.
Yep, and you get the the elevator core right there, and you've got accessible parking spaces as well uh, uh, below the surface.
So, is there an elevator?
Oh, yes. Yeah, there there'd be uh, two elevators, and and those elevators are right here.
So is it three stories?
Three stories. I'm I'm gonna flip through.
Above, it's three stories above the parking?
Yes.
Yeah, the parking is buried in, so when you're looking at the front of the building, you see three stories, in the back, you'll see slightly higher than three stories because.
It's kinda slow.
When you're doing garage, it's it's called parking deck or garage. If it's below the surface, you have to put provide mechanical air circulation. If you provide enough window space, then you don't have to provide the mechanical space, and we've all, with mechanical equipment, we've all seen ugly mechanical equipment on top of buildings. And so the question comes in, do you, it's expensive, and do you wanna put it on the roof and have to screen it and see these big screens, or do you put it on the ground where everybody hears it and it's ugly? So so the the solution to it is to provide some window space that that's, looks like a grill in the back of the building where, because the grade is naturally sloping down. Where we can get air circulation and we don't have to put up with mechanical equipment. So that that's that's the goal.
Will that be facing Hot Meadow?
Hmm?
Is that what you see when you're driving?
You won't see any of them.
We, the, when uh, you won't see the, any of the of the parking when you drive in or drive around the building, it's all gonna be hidden.
Yeah.
It, what?
Let's talk about more of the mechanicals that you talked about.
Bill, do you want, do you wanna have Chris jump in and show the?
Oh, I'm going there. The, when, in July, we went and talked to design review. Because w- with a um, a Holiday Inn Express, or really any national brand. Their model for the skin is diff- a Holiday Inn Express, or really any national brand, their model for the skin is different than um what what you would commonly see in the Farmington Valley. So we we took it to uh to uh design review for an informal review. And they gave us comments, we were able to get those comments back to uh Holiday Inn. And um we, uh the architect has evolved the building that is not the look of a standard uh Holiday Inn. And you've seen it in 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 the in the plans. That's the same elevation, that, we're looking at the elevation facing Dorset. And and the elevation that would face the the detention basin of of Dorset is basically that that same elevation, it's just reversed. They're they're identical elevations. And there 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 is a stair tower, let me go back. There's a stair tower that would be closest to somewhere over here would be Hot Meadow Street. And and we'll come in separately with a sign application. Uh but but that would be probably our our um our sign. And then the entrance to the garage, as I said, it ramps down, that would be the entrance to the garage. And then the rest of this is is rooms on three levels. Uh the um design review had suggested, we think about a mansard in a roof form up here for the third floor. To kind of bring uh the height down. And then this elevation shows the port cliche up at the at the corner of the building. And the back of the building, the building that faces the interior of the of the courtyard, is uh is reflective of those same forms. This is the, let me go back. This is the pool building. And those windows or air uh uh access points to the to the the garage. That's, those are those those spaces right there. Right out in here, we'd have the patio.
So is it loud on the patio then, like they're hearing all of the like venting from the mechanicals underneath?
And No, that's what I'm saying, when we do the air passage, you don't have to have any mechanical. All that's gone away, that's, you you wanna get, none of us wanna hear the mechanicals.
Right, okay.
And uh so when you have air that naturally moves into a space like that.
Okay, I see, so you're not having to vent the garage, you still have mechanicals for the building somewhere, just not in the
And they don't have to worry about the
Yeah, and they're all inside, all the mechanicals?
Yeah, the the mechanicals are either inside the building, like the individual, be individual room room heaters. Uh but we don't need any of that on the on on the site at this point.
On the ground, okay. Even the elevator?
Excuse me?
The elevator mechanicals were, there's the mechanicals.
The Chris, you'll have to answer that, cause the elevators would be somewhere in that area right there.
So are you doing heat pumps?
Well, yeah, so um I'm Chris Hill, uh principal of Blue Moon Design, so.
Oh, do you say say that again for the record?
I'm Chris Hill, uh principal architect of Blue Moon Design. At Briscoe, Connecticut.
Let's keep moving, gentlemen.
Alright, so basically, this is the pool house, the elevator core is right there. Um there's mechanic, we have service areas over here, sprinkler room, there's um mechanical room, we moved over, we moved over to here.
Right there.
Um any small rooftop units that service, it's a mansard roof, so it's actually a flat roof, but you won't, it's gonna be screened, there's parapin, so it'd be in the center. So there is nothing um would be sitting on the ground like, that would service the building.
I don't mean it's showing on the top because it's like set under.
Yeah, yeah.
Um can you talk about a little bit about um back to like more in the site thing? Um so this is the back of the building, but the back of the building essentially faces the future development site. So like what are the connections from the back of the building to like that future development?
The um see if we can show it, right in here is the patio. The future develop, what the back of the building is a is that L shape. We want that to face out, have a, we wanna have a plaza or a large sidewalk running through this area. And then we've got potentially three other commercial develop uh buildings and another commercial building here. With sidewalks and plazas throughout this this area.
And the guest could come and go from the hotel from that back patio door probably, right, so.
Yeah, we want the people to be able to walk straight through. And ultimately, what I'd like to do is have a kind of a sightline and ha- and have some visual corridors through here.
Okay. Okay.
And and that's why I didn't wanna heavily plant the back of the building.
Yep.
We wanna have it open so people can walk in and have have the restaurants that are in, would be in these other buildings. Maybe have a plot, a plaza back there or even, because we're not having a restaurant in this building.
Right.
The there's only a breakfast area. What, we might wanna have those re- if a restaurant were here, we might wanna have a relationship with them. So that they would serve lunch and dinner, that type of thing.
Yes, makes sense, alright, thank you.
So that's that's pretty much the story. Um if you have questions, we've got Scott here.
What's the timeline? Think about the timeline, why don't we do a stay overnight?
We'll we'll, once, if we're fortunate enough to pass through the planning here, we'll have to get back on board with Chris Hill. The engineers and start planning the site and getting everything set up, we're looking to break ground in the springtime.
Oh, that's my question.
And so how long does it take to, Holiday Inn to build one of their hotels?
Depends on who you have doing the work. I'm gonna be sort of G C-ing it myself with my construction background. Um we have subcontractors already lined up, we've got construction companies already lined up. Very excited on pricing and putting things together. But what we're finding is Kelly and I are both finding on the addition side, you can do all the planning you want.
Mm-hmm.
Um but you always have to design-build while you're moving along uh with the construction. So I'm gonna be with Chris Hill and Chris Hill and I are gonna become very intimate in terms of ensure that we know everything is correct uh to the T. Um and that's what our biggest plan is, so for the, through the winter months, we'll be planning everything. And then we'll go out and we'll start putting out uh construction documents and getting things set. Our plan is to get out there and move as quickly as we can in the spring.
George, how does that work with construction? With, are are they gonna be using the road that goes to Dorset Apartments for construction?
That's the only option, yeah, that'll be their construction.
Okay.
Once, once we get on site, there's
It's a public road, they have every, you know, every right to the, to use the road.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Once we get
But do you know what I'm asking?
equipment on site, once we get the equipment on site, we'll be pretty much on site.
In the site, that's, that's my question for them.
On site. There's gonna be a lot of movement, cause as Phil explained, a lot of the material is on site, you have the differing elevations.
Perfect. Yep.
So we're gonna take the elevations where uh the hotel is and where we're going down, we'll take that material that's used for the garage and level out uh the areas that we're trying to sort of create that, smooth out the the steep slope that's there right now.
Sure.
Jack, I know, so prior to construction
I'm sure there's a bunch of residents that are gonna be very concerned, so.
But prior to construction, we'll do a, we'll 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 have a pre-construction meeting, we'll i- i- identify where the tracking pads are gonna go.
Oh, yeah.
Perfect.
We're probably gonna have, you know, only one construction entrance.
Times?
Uh uh hours of operation essentially, that kind of thing, we did the same thing at Luminary.
Three times, perfect.
So we'll ha- we'll have those discussions as part of the pre-construction.
No, no, it'll be normal operating hours, it'll be seven to three generally.
Five to ten, it's fine.
Yeah, yeah, it may go to ten o'clock at night.
It's alright.
We'll work in the dark like hours.
Thank you.
That's impressive.
I do wanna press you a bit more on uh Bruce's question, I don't think we got an answer on that, are we looking at twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight?
Uh construction's gonna start in twenty twenty six.
But in terms of completion?
Yeah.
Simmsberry turns out, usual, normally you'll have about eighteen to twenty-four months uh till completion on that.
Alright, so
So you'll you'll, you know, we wanna compress it as much as we can. Uh so we're looking at the eighteen-month timeframe, uh you might have stuff leak out every once in a while.
So realistically, twenty twenty eight?
I'm still, it's eighteen months for the construction or eighteen months from the go to list?
Go to, go to finish.
To start off.
Go to finish, if you do it the right way, you plan correctly and you go in there and you have everything lined up.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think I think I got the answer, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's nice to see them going in there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm really excited at this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and 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 we're seeing a lot of excitement generate from this, um just even with uh Farley Max coming in here. The the thing that we've noticed with the rink, uh and again, we, I talked about this when uh when uh University of St. Joe's came by.
That's great.
We weren't anticipating the impact uh that the rink would have on the community that it is having. And it's mind-blowing, because you've got people that are coming in, that are going to the different restaurants. So we're kind of revitalizing Simsberry.
That's true.
And and it's exciting to see, and you know, and and you know, we we talked about the construction, we talked about building.
Yeah, there is.
No, I I I live in the town, we wanna be prudent about everything that we do. So like Phil says, you're not gonna go out there and build a master plan. But we're we're going to build it, but we're also gonna be working with the town to see what the town's expectations are versus what our expectations are. We have people that are sitting on the sideline right now that wanna jump in. Uh but we're gonna be selective with who we choose and who we decide to work with out there. Because we want it within the best interest of the town and the people that are here. Um you know, we wanna have a nice open space community that works within the nature that we have. So we're all on board um with the dark lighting and all that stuff. And we've 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 taken uh everything that the uh design board reviewed and everybody's put it in place with the wetlands screening. Taking everything that they've had into consideration when we're building this. Because it is a once-in-a-lifetime thing that we can do here, but we and we have to do it the right way.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Just one question about traffic, do we have any idea of how much additional traffic maybe to add?
Uh I'd have to go to Scott with the traffic studies on that, that's what we have him in here for. Um but the exciting thing that we did find is, you know, when we have a weekend here, we had about six thousand cars come through and stay in the town. But we we tracked all the placements of where they went within the towns of the different areas. So they went to Big Y, they were going over to the old well, they were going to Antonio's down the street and, you know, a couple of other places outside of town. But it's interesting to see that they're coming here and they're actually utilizing other areas of the town.
I I realize that we got uh some printed material that relates to Scott's uh traffic study, but I'd like to hear him talk about what the conclusion was, even if it's only a minute.
Yep.
What what exactly?
A minute would be
That sounds great.
It'll take me longer to walk up there than the
For the record, Scott Hesketh. Traffic engineer and a principal with the firm F A Hesketh and Associates, East Gramby. We did submit a traffic impact report dated September twenty second, twenty twenty five. The hotel is projected to generate about forty-one trips during the morning peak hour, uh fifty-six trips during the afternoon and Saturday peak hours. So less than one new vehicle a minute. Uh we expect that most of that traffic will be people coming and going, checking in, checking out. There are a lot of uh folks will be coming from the skating center to the uh skating rink itself. Um but we expect that in future developments, when we have the internal connections, that that traffic won't be coming back out onto Route ten. So uh we did uh uh extend the traffic out to the intersection of uh Dorset Crossing and Route ten. We did brand-new turning movement counts at that location. We included all the future traffic from the Dorset development, cause we've got uh the seventy-two apartments approved. There's two residential developments in the back of the development that um have been approved and have not yet constructed. There's also um uh master plans for a retail building and bank out front. We included all of that traffic into our background conditions. And we added the new traffic to the intersection and we're still getting levels of service A, meaning very minimal delays out at the intersection, so.
And A is what you would read it now?
Uh it's A in the background conditions and it's A when we're done, which means delays less than ten seconds per vehicle on average to the intersection. Uh and even if you don't believe me, we do have to go to the Office of the State Traffic Administration. So they'll be reviewing it to make sure that we've got good levels of service out there. Although the hotel itself doesn't qualify, since we're having access through the Dorset Crossing development. Um we we think they're gonna wanna take a look at it, so you don't have to believe me, uh you can rely on them to take a look at it and make sure that everything's gonna work out just fine. So with that, it'll be a little longer than one minute, but
No, you're serious, I I I was confused about this. If you were at the hotel, are you gonna be able to access Hoskins Road or County Road? No, not going out on Hot Meadow Street.
No, there are, the only access from the hotel at this point would be through Dorset Crossing, which goes out to Route ten. Uh and that's it, uh Dorset Crossing turns into another town road name, which I can't think of at the moment.
There's no connection between what's there and the uh development that's in some financial difficulty that exists?
No, 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 no. No, there's 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 no
That's all wooded and elevated back there, there's no connections.
It's right, okay.
The can, there's Dorset Crossing cul-de-sacs.
Yep.
Just north of the uh, north of the apartments of the two future developments which have yet to be constructed.
Alright. George, yeah, George, a question.
I'm
We uh moved to approve, can I just state that we approved the application number, or do I have to read the entire?
Does he have to read all nine?
No, I, what I would suggest to you, if you're headed in that direction, do you just let me pull it up and show it to everybody and then you can reference it, how does that sound?
That would be awesome.
Like that better? Let's do that.
I do wanna say I've just been very impressed with the way that you have approached us and and worked with us, um very candidly and openly. Not everybody does that, so thank you very much.
Alright. I I like your um, the way you've done your parking, um
Let me, let me just make, we just one comment, I know that's it's not a public hearing, but I just wanna make sure for the record, we we put three letters in your drop box. Uh we're
Yes.
Uh Barnett, Getz, and Amato.
Yes.
Yep.
Um alright, hang on, hang on, just be patient.
Do you wanna say anything to their feedback from that, like, I don't know, whether that was positive or negative?
Uh one one had a concern about traffic among other things, and the other two were were letters of support.
Very much.
Yeah.
It's
Yep. Yeah, the way you did your tra- um parking is good, um unless your, unless your developer would have made all that open space service parking, so thank you for not doing that.
Sorry, Tucker, took me a second.
Alright.
So yeah, I think if you could, I I, what I would recommend is, I think you could read, read the entry and then just reference.
Sure. Alright, I moved at the zoning commission approved application Z C twenty-five to twenty-six of Phil Doyle on behalf of L A D A. P C Land Planners Applicant Group of Ben Development LLC. Owner for a future site plan application, construct a plus or minus six sixty, eighty-six thousand one hundred square foot, one hundred twenty-room hotel at uh fifteen oh three Hot Meadow Street. Subject to the conditions displayed on screen and I'm sure accessible online.
And just for the record, I thi- I I think the applicant reduced that that square footage after additional calculations to seventy, plus or minus seventy-two? Plus or minus seventy-two thousand square feet?
It's plus or minus seventy-two thousand.
Okay, okay, just so amended to seventy-two thousand.
And then there are um, th- these conditions have been sent to the applicant. There are nine conditions, I I think the applicant probably did not see condition number nine.
Tess pits.
Which is a a ju- recommendation on tess pits and results prior to building commandments.
George, George, they're fine.
So that's, the only one we added, uh you, this this was not on the email, this was a a new one I added later.
I think I ended that in the email. I think we actually proposed that one.
Alright, I I like four o'clock. There, uh yeah, so there's my
We need a second?
So we've
Second.
A second. Doesn't matter.
So we've captured the motion.
Yep.
So we have a motion and a s- and a second to approve the application of fifteen oh three Hot Meadow Street for the hotel. Uh is there any further discussion?
Yeah, as I was, I think this is a great plan, I think it's great for the town, it's great for the northern part of the town especially. So I commend the developer for doing an excellent job, thank you very much.
And um I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. Uh this motion also carries, uh it's approved unanimously, so congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
I have to tell you, I'm up at the ice, the ice skating center every Saturday now, I have a four-year-old grandson who wants to die in the hockey place.
Come on, bring him in, come to the northern.
He loves it, he loves it, it comes Wednesday.
Nope, that's our new thing, he's uh, no wonder you wanna stay down there.
I think that's gonna stick, that's gonna stick.
We have, we have a couple of other matters to deal with tonight, so it's not in the letter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, very much. Yeah, that was a big news.
That was a big yes.
Super exciting.
That was very exciting.
We're gonna get more of that with those guys.
Oh, yeah. That was great, great to hear, sure.
Alright.
Fine. You have a bond to release?
Yeah, the the ne- the next item we're gonna deal with is uh the release of a bond, and I'll let George take a moment to talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically, this, the 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 bonds are typically handled administratively. But this is a bond that the zoning commission uh asked the applicant uh S L Simsberry as part of their overall construction, really is a- as part of their they're they're asking the zoning commission to uh to be able to complete all of the residential before starting the commercial. There was a, a- a- in the original approval for Hartford North, essentially, there was a, I think it was an eighty-twenty requirement.
Mm-hmm.
There was a, like, before you you couldn't build all the residential units, you had to have constructed the
Yeah.
The applicant came and said, listen, it's, you know, there's no marketplace for this, it's hard to do, so the applicant asked to place a bond on the building, so. And the zoning commission accepted uh really the cost of construction for one Cooper Street, which is where the nest is now. Okay, so the fact that one Cooper Street was constructed. Has a tenant and has received a certificate of occupancy, it's certainly appropriate for you to to release the bond.
Is the other building done?
The other building has one tenant in in uh, it's in, it's three, did I say the Nest Goddard School?
Is it Goddard?
Is it Goddard?
Goddard School, it's Goddard School.
Is it Goddard, okay.
It's got a spa, there's like a six, there's like a twenty five hundred square foot spa in that building.
I saw your comment that the landscaping, things that are not completed, that's under a separate bond.
There's still a, I don't know, over three hundred thousand dollar bond for this, that they came and asked for reduction.
For that.
Six months uh uh or so ago and this commission did not approve the bond reduction at that time.
Do you have any update on?
We we have, we have reached out to them as part of this and said, listen, we, you know, it's makes makes plenty of sense for them, for the zoning commission to reduce this bond on the building. Doesn't make it, but you still have an outstanding, you've got landscaping to finish, which I, they've done most of, we got them to plant dozens and dozens and dozens of plants in the spring. Um but final topping on the road, and there's, there's a bunch of items that they haven't completed, we have that bond.
Yeah, paving. conduit.
So there are two separate bonds?
There are, there are, there are, this is for the, this is for building only, this is for that.
Separate. How much is this bond?
This bond is six hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
But they've finished.
And it's, we it's got a certificate of occupancy.
The topic of that bond is concluded.
Is it? Yes, same, yes.
I think it's fair to release it, even though it's, they've been disappointing.
Yeah.
Well, I've been doing this for fourteen years, there's one vote that I casted, if I could ever get it back, it would've been the vote, Jackie told us not to give these guys a bond. They wouldn't comply.
Which guys?
It was more complicated, Silverman.
It's Silverman.
Oh, yeah.
So they took literally years to finish this building, years.
Yes, yeah.
Is the landscaping bond of three hundred thousand or so enough for what's remaining for the landscaping and top coat? Before we let this bond?
We think it is.
Okay.
It's just a matter of doing.
Understood.
It would be illegal coagular.
Yeah, we think it is.
Yeah, I mean.
So, are we ready for a motion?
I do say.
I wanna make the motion.
Okay, Tommy, make the motion.
Move, the zoning commission releases site improvement bond number C I C one nine two five zero two two, prepared by. The Capital Indemnity Corporation on behalf of S L Simsbury in the amount of six hundred and eleven thousand dollars. For the construction of a commercial building at one Cooper Avenue. Upon a finding that the improvement has been completed and received a certificate of occupancy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve uh release of the bond, uh any further discussion? All in favor, say aye please, aye, and those opposed, nay.
Aye.
Thank you, uh the bond is uh approved. Release is approved by unanimous vote. And then we have one more item. That is uh, has to do with, it's our responsibility on the zoning commission to appoint people. To slots on the D R B. And there is uh a vacancy on the D R B for an alternate. And the D R B has recommended an individual um for that position. And you all should have had received a copy of a uh. Outline of his experience and credentials, it's a man, man named William Cleag, C L E E, C L E G G, Jim. I don't have his address, but he's a Simsbury person. So um did anybody take the opportunity to review his and like to make some sort of a recommendation?
Yeah, I've talked to Bill, he's uh.
Oh, wait, I forgot.
He has an extensive background in interior design, he's been very involved in town, he. He serves on the Public Buildings Committee, um very, very experienced gentleman, I think he'd be an excellent addition to the D R B.
Yeah. Also, I'm on the Public Building Committee and served with him, would enjoy that. I served with him on the Public Building Committee.
So I was gonna say, you're endorsing him also, is that what you said? Oh, okay, thank you, Daddy.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I think he seems like he has good qualifications, we definitely need people with qualifications on D R B, so I would be in favor of approving.
Of course.
Appointing him, and I should say.
Is that a motion to approve uh his uh designation as a candidate?
Sure, I'm moved, moved to uh appoint William Cleag as an alternate on the design review board, so.
A second, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Bill Cleag to a position as an alternate on the design review board. Um any further discussion? All in favor, say aye please, aye, and those opposed, nay.
Aye.
William Cleag Junior is thereby appointed by unanimous vote to be an alternate on the Simsbury Design Review Board. So thank you, thank you, I'll free your attention for somewhat disoriented, he did a lot here.
I know, he's, I'm gonna direct the report.
Alright, yeah.
Yeah, we're pretty, pretty busy obviously for this particular evening, so I don't really have anything report, just a, uh just just FYI, the the McLean application has come back in. It will head to our uh in the levels. Commission for receipt tomorrow and then, you know, figure out when that public hearing process will start. And then two, we uh we we had our day in court. In trial court at um with S L Simsbury, the Hartford South application, uh I attended. And Tony, you weren't there, were you?
No, I didn't go.
And Bruce, Bruce and I attended, uh kinda short arguments, uh both lawyers kind of argued their briefs. Uh Bruce, do you add anything to that?
No, I would just say that, you know, for those who haven't done this, the the term argument does not, you know, fully describe this, it's basically. They reread the submitted material, so if the judge wasn't paying enough attention, they had it read personally to them in court.
Ju- judge did not ask a lot of questions.
There was very little beyond that.
There's very little, very little to-ing and fro-ing back and forth there, so we, I mean, we we we've anticipated a decision thirty to sixty days.
Right.
Any update on Vessel?
Maybe. I don't have an update on Vessel, uh I, we um.
Okay. They're still going for the state?
We continue to work with them on 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 their building materials and and design, um. Continue to work with them.
Okay. And the Chipotle site is moving forward?
Yeah.
You can see a lot of disturbance?
It sure is, yeah, it sure is.
But Starbucks is no longer at the table?
That's correct, not not at the table.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the back ten thousand square foot inline tenant space is under construction as well, we, at least we gave a permit for it.
It is? Let's go on.
Maybe they haven't broke, I I I, so just just the tenant shell, I understand, I don't know that they've identified, I don't think they've identified any specific tenants for that prop- property.
No.
Oh, no tenant. Great, thank you.
Okay, well. If there's nothing else, could I request a two?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those not, aye, please say yes.
For over forty years, S C M has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
S C M isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, S C M faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet only subscriptions.
S C M receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that S C M remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to S C M, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree. S C M is crucial for keeping our community connected.
S C M isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that S C M continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the Q R code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government come together.